All right, hello and welcome to the Monday, November 27, 2023 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. In accordance with the state's Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on November 21, 2023 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Can we please take roll, Mr. Eckert?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Lenningbeater?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stotts?
Here.
And Mr. Marini?
Here, we have a quorum. We will now take a motion to move into executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provide that a public body may exclude the public from the portion of that meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset in the state of New Jersey as follows: The matter to be discussed is a harassment, intimidation, and bullying appeal, and the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Could I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll be back around 7:30.
Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stotts?
Here.
Ms. Trheo?
Here.
And Mr. Marini?
Here, we have a quorum. You can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to their republic, and to its citizens, with all due justice for all.
And if we could all remain standing, in honor of Veterans Day, we are going to invite up the mixed corral to sing our national anthem. That was incredible. Well, it's all downhill from here. All right, so we will move forward to our agenda here. I'd like to acknowledge the correspondence as listed. We will move on to committee reports. So we'll start with education. Ms. Lenningbeater?
Thank you. The Education Committee met on November 21. We looked at the updates for the Nursing Services Plan, which is required to be approved by the Board each year, and was just waiting for input on any changes that were coming with the nurses that collected information in the beginning of the school year, to see if any plans change for students. We looked at the Title I School Parent and Family Engagement Policy. As it was noted, this is something that is required to receive Title I funding, and there was talk of incorporating a paragraph within the policy that basically expressed that it would not be used as an evaluated measure for staff members, but more as looking to inspire everyone involved, you know, to work to do the best for students. But again, that it was not used to be an evaluated, sorry, tool or making any comment on parents. We looked at policies for, I believe, first reading, religion in schools, the eligibility of resident and non-resident students, the education of homeless children in youth, and the Bridge Year Pilot Program policy, which is going to be abolished because that came about due to COVID and is no longer relevant. There were changes that the State Board of Education adopted for English Language Arts and Mathematics. We have, we anticipated the changes to the language arts curriculum, which they are looking to get teachers to write curriculum to implement for September of 2024. The math changes were a surprise, however, with money that was able to be shifted. There can be an addendum revision of that math to the math curriculum, and a full revision will go through in 2024, 2025. And finally, there was a discussion had brought up, a board member brought up a discussion about controversial issues. The discussion was, you know, had and how we would, you know, see if, you know, to ensure that teaching staff hadn't, I guess, made any, I don't know if anyone else could speak to that one.
Yeah.
Just to overview of, and some discussion regarding, you know, what we, what we talk about now and how we talk.
Thank you, and that was it.
All right, thanks, Ms. Lenningbeater. I will cover HR as Ms. Nurse is not here today. This is a pretty packed agenda for that meeting. So some of the items I referred to was a sick bank leave request that I believe was approved. There was a update on the sick leave policy, and for those that were at a previous board meeting, I think there was a question on whether or not this had been discussed with the HEA, and that discussion did occur. And with the changes made, the recommendation was unanimous that the Board should approve the second reading of that, right? Yes, second reading of that, okay. We also, you know, as we recommended, the Board approval for additional policies, examination for cause, attendance, and the abolishment of sick leave policy replaced with a policy and regulation. We also discussed on an approved recommendation to have an interim supervisor for observations at a per diem rate to assist in those observations. We reviewed a potential sidebar agreement that related to different clubs and the redistribution of funds for this year only. That was unanimously approved by the HR Committee. And the, we approved four club proposals: Aerospace, Hindu Student Club, Knit and Crochet Club, and Magic the Gathering Club. And then, oh yeah, and then, yeah, then personal items, we won't discuss what those are. We discussed about how the exit surveys are done and some discussion on exit surveys, a transportation grievance, and then it's a discussion on the structure of the HR Department with our new head, and then some light discussion on collection of participation fees. All right, and that's it for the HR. I will move on to operations.
The Operations Committee met also on November 21, and we covered a few items, the most, one of which was the fiscal year 2023 audit, where Mr. Kaczynski from Nissavatia will be giving a presentation, so I won't go into that in any further detail. We also reviewed policies on the food services, and the policy that's on tonight's agenda, 8500, was rewritten to roll into the policies that are now going to be abolished, also on tonight's agenda. And then finally, just some updates on the 2425 budget process and follow-up on the Build Borough Back hiring process, which is very exciting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Heo.
And then last but not least, we had the Governance Committee meeting. For that, we covered a couple of items. The first was discussion on the Citizens Advisory Committee. This is one that I think could have been abolished, but we wanted to obviously continue to use that policy, and I think we went more with the standard policy template on that one. The next were some informational discussion items, the next step on the referendum, so talking about how taxes will be collected and just informing the Board on what that process is, and that's on the township. An update on the Strategic Plan Survey, so we did review the questions that are going to be sent out to the community, and I believe we made some minor adjustments to that questionnaire that we sent back to our partners to distribute. And then, again, we also discussed the policy on controversial issues and just had a high level discussion on it and decided if we need to come back to it, we would. And that was it for governance. Any other comments or anything on committee stuff before we move forward? Okay, great. All right, so next. Is it? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to once again thank the citizens of Hillsborough for recently passing the referendum for the 20 certificated staff positions as well as the Security Department. I want to let you know, I'm anticipating making some hires on one of the December Board meetings, so we are moving fast. It may take us some time for all of them, but we are going to fill all of them, and I'm excited that I'm going to be able to make some recommendations to this Board at a December Board meeting. I also wanted to reiterate that was discussed as governance right now. For anybody who still has questions about what happens now with the referendum, what were the results, what goes on with taxes or tax bills, we do have, they haven't been frequently asked, but let's call it frequently asked questions, right on our website that you can click and take a look where we go in detail as to what are the next steps. But for us administratively, it is going to be hiring. I also really want to thank the mixed corral again, that was a beautiful rendition of our national anthem. They did an outstanding job, and I understand they did it last year, and it's always a joy to have our students come and perform for us right there. The last thing I'd like to say to the community is, when it comes to our strategic plan, as President Marini noted, we are going to be getting a community survey out in early December. I will send out a separate email outside of Hillsborough Happenings to let everybody know it's coming, and there'll probably be a two-week opportunity for all community members, and we're going to try to partner with the township in getting this out as well, so staff members, parents, those of you who don't have children in the schools, as well as our middle school and high school students, are all going to have an opportunity to have their voices heard through the strategic planning survey, that then this Board will have a chance to analyze that data. So please, when you see that, if you want your voice heard, please be sure to fill out the, the survey. Finally, the most exciting thing of the night, I'd like to kick it over to our business administrator, Mr. Eckert, who is going to talk about our annual audit requirements and some of the information you'll be hearing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Welpe. Actually, I'm going to turn the honors over about talking about the audit to Mr. Andrew Kaczynski from Nissavatia. He is the partner on our, on our account and is here to present the audit to the Board tonight.
Well, as you so astutely pointed out, highlighted the night, I mean, it's, you know, well, it's the second, I tell you, the mixed corral, really, what a, what a beautiful rendition of the national anthem, that was really beautiful. But I'm not here to talk about that tonight, I'm here to talk about the results of the annual audit. So prior to the meeting starting, I handed everyone a four-page breakdown, it's kind of a high-level overview of everything. Just so you know, you have two books in front of you, you have a small book, and that's the Auditor's Management Report, and then you have the larger book, which we often refer to as the yearbook, it looks like a yearbook. Inside of the larger book is all of your financial information, everything in detail for the year, and Auditor's Management Report is kind of just abbreviated with some notes, but not as much financial information really included therein. So I'm going to start off on that little four-page handout that I gave you, and most of this information, I'll let you know when it's in the Auditor's Management Report, but for the most part, it's going to be in that larger book. So if you start at the top of that page, the first thing that you'll see there is a breakdown of your fund balances at June 30, 2023. They're in that center column highlighted in bold at the top. So your ending fund balance totaled $23.4 million, that's an increase of $1.2 million over the previous year. What makes that up is $5.6 million in your capital reserve, $1.9 million in your maintenance reserve, you had excess surplus that was generated last year of $4.5 million, that's currently being used in your 202324 budget, and then we generated $4.5 million again this year, and that's going to be used in your 202425 budget. You also had unemployment compensation of about $443,000, you had encumbrances of about $2.7 million, and your ending unassigned fund balance was $3.5 million. The big change in that is that if you recall from last year, it was calculated as 4% of the expenditures was the maximum allowed amount that went there. That was for last year and the previous year, that sunset at the end of last year, so we're back to the 2% that historically has been the allowed unassigned fund balance. Again, if you look just below that, you're going to see that our excess surplus that we're using year over year has been consistently the same amount. It was for 202223, the year that I just completed the audit on. It is for the current year that we're in that budget, the 2324, and as of right now, that's the amount that will be used in your 202425 budget. We love seeing consistency with that number, so that's excellent, really shows a good, strong financial position and good, good, sound financial planning. Directly below that, you're going to see the activity that brought us to the ending balances for the capital and maintenance reserves. We started with $4.1 million in the capital reserve, and we were able to increase that at the end of 202223 by $1.5 million, bringing us to the ending balance of $5.6 million. The maintenance reserve started with $2.2 million, and we were able to put $708,000 into that, and we did use $1 million of maintenance reserve in the 202223 budget, and we used all of that money, leaving us with an ending balance of $1.9 million. If you turn to the top of the second page, you'll see there the Food Service Fund and the activity related to that. The biggest thing here to note is that when you look at the 2022 versus the 2023 numbers that are there, the Seamless Summer Option ended at the end of 2022. So when you look there, the operating revenue is what you actually do as sales in the cafeteria, which of course, because we had the Seamless Summer Option, took a significant dip in 2022 and also 2021. Your non-operating revenue is the amount that comes from all of your financial, federal and state money, as well as a little bit of interest in there. And again, you'll see a significant change in those, but when we took a look back prior to the Seamless Summer Option, you're pretty much back to where you were about. We also had $3.7 million of expenditures there. I'm sorry, I didn't give you the numbers for those. You had $2.3 million from your operating revenues, and your non-operating revenues, you had about $1.3 million, offset by $3.7 million of operating expenses, leading to a net decrease of about $156,000. Nothing to worry about there, food service is still in a strong financial position, but your breakdown of your ending balances in your food service, you've got $226,000 in your capital assets, and you had about $1.3 million of unrestricted, leaving you a full balance of $1,586,000. Directly below that, you're going to see the Summer Enrichment Program. So for the Summer Enrichment Program, we had $214,000 of operating revenue, offset by $228,000 of operating expenses, leading to a decrease of about $14,000 there, and $72,000 in ending net position. Below that, you're going to see the long-term liabilities, this is all the debt that is related to the district. We paid down $1.4 million of serial bonds, leaving us with a balance of about $33,900,000. The net pension liability, which is the, the, we're required to report on this on a GAAP basis, this is primarily the, the, the state's liability, but we're required to disclose it within our financial statements. That actually increased by about $5.5 million, leaving us with an ending balance of $21.9 million. Compensated absences, we had, we had $243,000 accrued of compensated absences, and we paid out $205,000. That left us with a balance of about $3.1 million. Finance purchases payable, we paid off $1.1 million, leaving us with a balance of $11.1 million. Leases payable, we had an increase of $2.7 million, and we paid off about $2 million of that, leaving us with an ending balance of about $3.7 million. So our total liabilities altogether, all of that combined, was about $74 million, a little bit under $74 million. Onto the next page, there's just two management suggestions, these are now in that, in that smaller book, if you go towards the back of that, you'll see them there. We just had two management, one management suggestion that we wanted to talk about was COVID-19 federal funding. If you recall from last year, I talked about this a little bit. We've never had any issue with the district's records as, as long as we've been here, looking everything over and all that. You know, Jerry, Michelle, the rest of your office staff do a really great job keeping all the records in order. It's just kind of a heads up to make sure that everything is still kept in order, is still on file, in the event that any federal or state agency comes in to audit any of that COVID money. You know, we've seen it, we've seen it around a lot of places, and it's just kind of, it's just a heads up that we put across the board on all of our clients. And then moving on to the last page, this is a little feather in Jerry's cap, Michelle's cap, so on and so forth. We have no recommendations this year, and if you look towards the bottom, that big large chunk talking about the previous year, that's just saying that the recommendations from the previous year were completely resolved in the current year, and that they're not included in this year's report. So I know it's a little bit of a high-level overview, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, seeing none, thanks.
We'll do it again next year.
Thank you, thank you. And Mr. Eckert, Ms. Lefebvre, I'd really like to thank you for your work, because that's kind of like your report card right there. So, Mr. Eckert, I don't know if there's anything else that you wanted to say in regards to that?
Yes, there is. Michelle and I couldn't get this work done without the dedication of our entire business office team. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Kaczynski for the professionalism of his team when they were here occupying our conference room for the better part of a week and a half.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
And that concludes my superintendent's report.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll now move on to the approval of minutes. 9.1, motion to approve minutes from the regular public meeting, 11:1323. Can I get a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on to the first public input on the action agenda and the 20242025 budget. You're very much welcome in for the public during the Board meetings, there'll be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they're attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment on any items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the Board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be concerned to the residents of the school district as per BLA 0167. Before you say your comment, you have to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment, please understand that our public forums do not structure as question-answer sessions, but rather offer as opportunities to share your thoughts of the Board. If this is where the Board believes is a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the Board President or Superintendent will address the comment. Maybe times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions, commonly known with the Public Meeting Act and the privacy rights of public employees and companies therein, do not permit the Board to discuss personnel issues in public session.
Good evening, Amy Salinger, Treasurer of the HEA and teacher at Otten Road Intermediate School. I'm just here to comment on item 12.10 for the interim supervisor for staff evaluations. I'd asked about this earlier when it was taken off the prior agenda. I was just questioning why it's necessary, as this, to me, is supposed to do evaluations, that's the responsibility of our current administrative staff. So I was just, I know you can't answer the questions, but is it in reaction to necessary state mandated paperwork that takes away from more meaningful work that they could be doing? Is it to lighten the load of administrative staff? And the reason I ask is because I think we would all agree that all staff, and in particular certificated staff, have an overabundance of state mandated paperwork, but we are expected to just get that done. I welcome, and I know our members would also welcome, any conversations where we could, you know, create parity for, for all staff that has state mandated paperwork and work to complete. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, I'm Neha from Hillsborough High School.
And I'm David from Hillsborough High School.
We are from Hillsborough High School's FBLA, which is the Future Business Leaders of America Club, and today we would like to talk about our successes last year and our plans for this year. So FBLA is the largest business and career and technical student organization in the world, preparing over 230,000 high school students for careers in business. Through academic competitions and events at the regional level and national level, students develop their leadership, public speaking, and teamwork skills. As you may know, we started FBLA last year. As a rookie team of 40 members, we had 29 state qualifiers, 28 top-10 finalists, and impressive 22 national qualifiers. These numbers are incredibly high for any team, let alone a beginner team, and we want and represent our team's dedication to the new opportunities that FBLA provides. We also want to let you know that one of our national qualifiers, Mary Fox, placed fifth in the entire nation for advertising. FBLA is different from many other clubs at our high school, especially in regard to student interest, time commitment, and the competition element. Word clearly got out last year about our successes, and this year, almost 200 students expressed interest in joining our club. That's right, roughly 200 students were interested, which would have made FBLA the largest club in the school after just one season with zero dollars invested by the school district. After many long days of charts, Mr. McDonald improved an expansion of our club from 40 to 70 students for this season, which resulted in cutting over half the members who originally tried out.
So now, if there, if there was a stipend for this advisor position, we would have likely been able to accept even more qualified students and given everyone the opportunity that they deserved. Mr. McDonald agreed to help us start this club when nobody else would, and now would like to pass the club on to one or two of our dedicated high school teachers. We hope you guys agree with us that this club and we, the students in it, deserve a paid, dedicated advisor with a passion for business. We also want to thank Mr. Delolo and Mr. Simpson for their support of FBLA from the very beginning and look forward to sharing our successes with them again this year. Despite our many logical challenges, we are moving forward with a bold plan to inspire our members and make an impact on the community. This year, we plan to go full steam ahead with a large FBLA chapter event that will focus on engaging younger Hillsborough students. We're still working at the kinks, but the general goal will be to run a business conference and competition for heiress and HHS students, where they can learn about many facts of business, compete in different events and activities, explore different careers, and hopefully inspire them to create their own FBLA chapter before they join ours when they reach high school. We will update you as the details come together for this event, and would love for you to visit this event to see what FBLA is all about. Overall, HHS FBLA is more than a club, we are a body of dedicated, business-minded individuals seeking ways not only to win competitions and earn Hillsborough recognition, but also make a real tangible influence in the community. On behalf of all the members and our advisor, Mr. McDonald, thank you for your time and continued support.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Tiffany Neal, and I'm here today, live in Hillsborough, and I'm here tonight to talk about robotics and urge you to maintain it as a funding priority in next year's budget. I want to say a big thank you to the RoboRaiders First Robotics Competition Team 75 for hosting the recent Borough Blast tournament for FLL, or First Lego League. The students volunteered all day long to make it a successful and fun event. Special thanks to advisor Todd McDonald and mentor Deb Boye, and props to Ms. Stotts for coming to watch that day. Many of the Hillsborough Middle School teams did well at Borough Blast, thanks to the leadership of coordinator Jennifer Tuller. For example, the Wind Wizards won first place for core values, the Eco Geniuses won second place for core values, the Artistic Illustrators won second place for robot design, the VR Deck won the Engineering Excellence Award, and the Wind Wizards earned a spot at the North Jersey Championship. I was also excited to see Rebecca Barajas, my kid's librarian from Amsterdam, at the event with her younger students. event with her younger students. I want to give a shout out to Don Leneski, my co-coach for First LEGO League. Our team, the Programming Trolls, is part of 4H but made up of students from heiress and HMS. The students won first place at Borough Blast for their innovation project, a research project about learning musical instruments with a VR platform. They also earned a spot at the state championship. Finally, I want to congratulate the three teams from Hillsborough High School who do FTC, First Tech Challenge, the RoboRaiders, Cyberknuts, and Robo Legion. In addition to showcasing their robots at Borough Blast, they had a league meet the very next day, and they earned first, second, and third place in the competition, thanks to advisor John Askew for helping to grow this program. The Hillsborough community appreciates your support for robotics and STEM opportunities in the school, and we hope that you will continue to fund those in future years. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing no others. I would just like to mention the students that came up and talked about the Future Business Leaders of America. There is in 12.1 a proposal to, and I believe, two advisor stipends as part of that, so hopefully that will get approved, and you'll get what you're looking for. I think that's, yeah, so I guess with that, we will move on to the action agenda. Oh, sorry, hold on. Any board members want to make any comment before we move on to the action agendas?
Well, I just wanted to comment on item 12.1. Coincidentally, I guess, FBLA will have funding for their advisors along with other clubs, and I'm just very, very happy about how Mr. Volpe and the HEA worked, and I would say even, you know, worked hard and also had some creative and open-mindedness to, to make this happen, because it's funding several clubs, dance teams, the unified team, the dance team, and so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Stotts. All right. Now, Mr. Volpe, we can move on to the action agenda.
Thank you. I'd ask for the board's consideration in approving the following motions in the area of education. Travel and related expenses. Travel and related expenses for board member Gene Trujillo. Travel-related expenses for board member Jane Stats. Travel-related expenses for board member Allison Lanning-Beater, and those are all from the School Boards Convention. To affirm the superintendent's HIV cases. Approve the application for the submission of a state and local cybersecurity grant program. Approving field trip destination. Approving the submission of a grant application for Hillsborough affinity credit card grant. Approving the 23-24 nursing services plan, and approving the submission of the NJ-QSAC District Performance Review.
Can I get a motion in a second? Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Stotts?
I abstain of 11.3, and yes for everything else.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes, and I abstain from 11.2, please.
And Mr. Marini? Yes, motion passes.
In the area of human resources, I'd ask for the board's consideration for the following. Approving the sidebar agreement with the Hillsborough Education Association, resignations, leave replacement assignments, revised mentor, revised intramural stipend, revised seventh-period coverage, leaves of absence, co-curricular, rescinding a co-curricular contract, approving contract change, approving appointments, approving student/teacher, approving mentors and buddies, approving coaches, approving co-curricular clubs, and approving extra coverage.
Can I get a, sorry, yes, can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Stotts?
On item 12.10, regarding the appointment of an interim supervisor for staff evaluations, I vote no, and I vote yes for everything else.
And Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini? Yes, motion passes.
In the area of policies, I would ask for the board's consideration to approve the following. Approving policies and regulations reviewed by the Ed Committee for first reading. Approve policies and regulations reviewed by the Ed Committee for second reading. Approving policies and regulations reviewed by the Governance Committee for first reading. Approving policies and regulations, did I skip a section?
We missed operations. Yeah, we missed operations.
Let me back that up for a second and ask for the board's consideration in the area of operations. My apologies. Approving the following motions. Monthly financials, line item transfers, financial status, monthly bills, agreement with E-Rate Partners for 24-25, accepting the annual audit, approving out-of-district placements, parent transportation contract, 139, another parent, ESY parent transportation contract, and a motion to accept donations. The audit was just so fantastic, I just forgot about the entire operations.
I thought I blacked out for a second. All right, can we get a motion in a second?
Second.
Only this side of the room. Any discussion by the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Stotts?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes. Again, my apologies for going out of order, but now back to those policies. I'd ask for the board's consideration in approving the following policies. Policies and regulations reviewed by the Ed Committee for first reading. Also, second motion, approving policies and regulations reviewed by the Ed Committee for second reading. Policies and regulations reviewed by the Governance Committee for first reading. Policies and regulations reviewed by the HR Committee for first reading. And policies reviewed by the Operations Committee for first reading.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Got it. Any discussion by the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Stotts?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes.
All right, we'll move on to the second public comment section. We very much welcome input of the public. During the board meetings, there'll be two 30-minute periods of time. The meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they're attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that the member of the public feels may be a concern of the residents of the school district as per BLO 0167. Before you state your comment, you may be asked to provide your name and address. There is a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-answer sessions, rather offer as opportunities to share your thoughts of the board. In cases where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. Maybe times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions, kindly note the Open Public Meetings Act and the Privacy Rights of Public Employees and Compass therein. Do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session.
Hi, Alicia Gabor-Belis, live in Hillsborough. Just wanted to point out, for those who get the sets, their kids might bring it home or you can get it from the Board of, Board of Ed Office, it's the Hillsborough Township Public Schools District Calendar and Handbook. Very handy thing. So at the back of it, you can also find information about your schools, all the phone numbers and things like that. Inside, you'll find, at least September through December, you'll see when the Board of Ed meetings are listed. And I was wondering if, I know that the calendar, like, we just passed the district calendar, or at least it was discussed, it's probably can't pass. I was wondering if it's possible for you to add the Board of Ed meetings throughout the calendar. I know in the past, it might have been like you want to wait till January, so you have a whole board, if anyone's new, but usually you have at least two-thirds of the board continuing, so it'd be nice to just have the dates listed in the calendar for those who look at it. I know that we have a huge crowd here tonight, but, you know, people do look at it online, and it's just helpful to have. Also, I wanted to thank you for having the choir. I came two minutes late, so I missed most of it, but it's lovely to have the students come and, and show off what they're, what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing no others, we'll close public comment. I will now open it up to any board members or anyone else.
So I just wanted to follow up in terms of what I mentioned last meeting. So I talked to Mr. Delolo and the Student Council, and I'm happy to say that we came up with a plan and we made an action committee in terms of not only the, the bathroom rules that I talked about the last board meeting, but also in terms of AP testing and how final exams are going to correspond with AP testing, because there was some concern about both exams being pretty redundant. So the next Student Council meeting is actually tomorrow, and it's on the agenda to create those two action committees, and we will be working on those two areas of concern.
All right, thanks for the update.
I can just say, I want to really thank you for spearheading that, and I know Mr. Delolo always wants to hear from students. So after, you know, you do things at the high school, if there are either changes implemented or recommendations made, we'd love for you to report back out afterwards, so thank you